Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 11th, 2024 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for coming. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyser.
Wyser here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Gray here.
Okay, we have minutes from December 14th. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. And can we entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Okay, just for those of you here and those watching from afar, near and far, we have a sketch plan scheduled for 7:00 and a work session scheduled for 6:30 to 7:00. That's internal, not really internal, but non-public hearing business we discussed between 6:30 and 7:00. If we finish that before 7:00, we will move directly into the public hearing portion. So we may start the public hearing before 7:00 if we're, you know, once we're done with our, going over our tabled items. Just want to make that clear. And if we're not done with the tabled items, we'll stop that at 7:00 and start the public hearing at that point. Okay, Doug, do you want to go through our tabled items?
Yes, so our first table item, 1676 Penfield Road, the Flower City Arcade. We have not received any new information since the board sent out the rather lengthy tabling resolution with follow-up steps. So having received no new information, no action is required by the board tonight.
Okay.
Tabled application number two is the Wellsbrook subdivision at 1345 Shoe Craft Road. Since our last meeting, staff has gone back and forth with the applicant regarding the tree inventory and listing of trees on the property. These revised documents were provided to you guys for your review. Additionally, after the last meeting, we did provide this documentation both to the Town Landscape Consultant, Bruce Zaretsky, as well as the EEECC, the Energy and Environmental Conservation Committee. The EEECC is an advisory committee, so they are reviewing it and they expect to be able to provide a report to, or an addendum to their existing report to the board by their next meeting, which is-
February 8th.
February 8th, our next public hearing night. So we have received comments back from Bruce. Most of his comments were minor and technical. He recommended additional buffering to a couple of the properties along Plank Road, specifically in the area around the stormwater management facility on the west side of the property, as well as a couple of other small technical recommendations, types of plants and things like that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, maybe we could turn the volume up, the speakers?
Are you a little louder now?
Can you-
Test, test.
Actually, I'm not hearing you that well either, Doug.
Yeah.
Just make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
Yeah, can Control Central maybe turn the speaker volume up in the auditorium? So- Oh.
Is there someone we could do it relatively easily? I don't think, like, I can't hear even through the monitors. I can't hear myself through the monitors.
We could do that.
That's okay.
Yeah, we'll do that, because-
Can you hear me?
Just, just your voice, not through the PA.
Yeah, we need, we have folks in the auditorium that need to hear and the board needs to hear others. You know, we don't want to have to act like we're at a football game or something.
In like a flash.
All right. Wow.
Is that good? Can you hear it now?
Can you hear, is this better?
Test, test.
Doug, why don't you try? Doug, you say something.
Can you all hear me now? I feel like the Verizon guy now.
Terrific. Thank you very much. In and out like a flash.
Maybe, maybe he should reread that last-
Yeah, I can, I can go over-
Yeah, why don't we go over?
I'll go over what you stated again.
That's gonna be too loud.
So since our last meeting, we did receive revised tree inventory. We had been going back and forth with the applicant and their engineer on that. Additionally, they provided additional information, including in the listing of trees, what would be in the buffer area, what is in the area of disturbance, as well as, at the last meeting, the board requested that this be sent to the Town's Landscape Consultant, as well as EEECC, EEECC being an advisory committee that provides recommendations to the legislative boards in the town.
Right, and that is, for the record, the newly merged Energy and Environmental Committee and the Conservation Board.
Correct. So they, they expect to have an updated report available to the board at the February 8th meeting. That is their, their once monthly board, so it's their next meeting.
Okay. All right, Bob, is your application?
Sure. I know Bruce did a review, but from the date of his memo-
Bruce, the landscape consultant?
Yes, the landscape consultant. From the date on his memo, that was prior to the latest update on the survey, and he really didn't make a comment on the survey. So I guess I would recommend that we submit that to him and ask him specifically on the survey.
Okay. Yeah, we did provide him with the previous, the survey that we'd received-
Yeah.
On the 29th of December, 28th of December. So he did have one of them, but we can specifically ask for comments on the tree survey and see if he can provide additional information.
And then with, with that update, with the color coding, I know it addresses vegetation, trees in the buffer, but in the area where it's cleared, I think the general consensus or the idea is that the trees in the construction area would be removed.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
But that is something that we can ask the applicant to clarify as well.
Yeah, so, so I know with the infrastructure going in, the roads, the utilities, the grading, a lot of them may be lost and would have to be replaced to some number that would be, you know, appropriate. But I would think, too, that there would be some healthy trees possibly that exist within that footprint that may very well be saved. So I guess, you know, my comment is that in the course of construction, when the lots are staked out, when the utilities are staked out, that particular trees that are healthy, I would think that there would be some number that would be able to be saved.
Yeah, I would agree, if at all possible. I'm not sure if it's something that we should go through and say, hey, can you save these trees? Or, but if, if there's any way possible to save as many as possible-
Right.
-in that area, that would be, that would be terrific. You know, just using the magnifying glass on my phone to try to write down some numbers of the trees, but yeah, so we should definitely-
It could be something we can ask them to identify trees that they, that have the potential to be preserved, that would provide minimal disruption to the destruction process. I mean, there are certainly ones within the house pads and where utilities, the roads, the driveways going, that are limited in the potential. I mean, we have required it before. There was a house on Jackson Road or development on Jackson Road where a driveway did go around a tree at the request of the planning board. But we can look at ones, you know, potentially have them look at ones that are outside of, you know, the, the pad areas and areas that may need to be graded as heavily to see if there's trees that can be protected either through a tree well and staking.
Okay. Any other comments on this application at the moment?
I'd just like to, to note for the record, for those that weren't present at the last meeting, that the same discussion was had with the developer and their engineer and that they went on record saying that they recognized that it's in their best interest for the success of, of the development and the sale of homes to salvage as many trees as possible. And they pointed out that, which of course, we know that this developers had several other projects in the town, that it has been their practice to, to try to salvage as many trees as they, as they reasonably can to, you know, it's, this is, this is not a, this is not a firm that has a reputation for clear cutting whatever they can. I just want the audience to recognize that as well.
I would agree. Well, well put. Any comments, Kelly?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're awaiting some additional information. And so I guess we continue to table?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll move that we continue to table.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Okay. We're done with tabled applications. Any, any last minute additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. So like I said 15 minutes ago, if we get done early with our tabled items, which we have, we will move right into the public hearing portion of the evening. And this, we have one sketch plan before us to be presented this evening. And the way the process works, if you're unfamiliar with the process here in Penfield, a sketch plan is an informal conversation with the board and the public, presenting a concept or an idea. It's not an actual official application. As such, it typically will not have as many details as an actual application. Grading plans, a lot of engineering plans won't exist during a sketch plan because the applicant or the proposed developer is, is asking for feedback on that before they commit the resources to do that. We will have the applicant present the sketch plan. They could come up to either this table or that table and give their presentation, then the board will ask questions that we have. Once the, once we get through our questions, we open it up for public input and are there slips of paper out? Okay, so there's little slips of paper in the table as you walk in the door. So if you'd like to speak, you can fill out one of those, or you don't have to do that. It's not a hard and fast rule. I will go through those slips of papers first, and then if somebody wants to say something, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. And if I call on you, please come up and sit at one of these two microphones, state your name and address for the record, and then please share your comments with the board and direct them at the board, not the applicant. All right, Doug, with that said, please read our sketch plan application for this evening.
All right. BME Associate.
Are these men from Crosstown?
They are, which you will find out in short order.
All right. BME Associates, Ton Leford Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Insight Land Development, Inc., request an informal discussion before the board with plans for revised lot layout within Phase 2 of Stafford Park on 4.3 acres at 1918 Jackson Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Insight Land Development, Inc., and zoned residential R120. Application number 24P-0001, SBL number 124.16-1-39.31.
Okay. Welcome, go ahead.
My name is Rudy Neufeld. With me this evening is Mike Bogacheski, and I work with Crosstown Construction, and we're respectful of the board's valuable time, so I'm going to make my presentation brief, and will open to any questions that the board might have. So our project is Stafford Park. We're looking to take a revision to Section 2. It was originally designed for seven lots. We had an area that had the possibility to be wetlands, and the state moved so slowly, so we went ahead with that assumption. Finally, the state did make a determination that it is not a wetland. That allowed about an acre of property for an additional lot. The original 278 approval was for 20 building units. We have one customer that built on two lots, so with the addition of this extra lot, we will still be complying with the 278 approval. There will be a total of 20 units. And one of the nice things that this was able to do for us, when we went to the other lot and the wetland came away, it allowed us to pull the, what was the former lot 7 and the future lot 8, about 30 to 40 feet closer to the cul-de-sac, and simultaneously having those two units be about 30 to 40 feet further away from the, the neighbors to the east and the north of us. So that was it. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them if they're technical in nature. We brought Mr. Bogacheski for that.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Jim, you want to start?
Sure. So this is really a question for Mike. Any change in the green space?
That, I, I, there'll be, I think some minor changes. I don't know the number off the top of my head, I'll be honest with you. That's something we could calculate, but the, your impervious numbers with house pads is, is a wash, because you have the same number of units, so to speak, so.
Actually, it might be a little less, because the, the larger house that the one customer built is probably not twice the size of-
Correct, correct. Yep. But if you're, if you're counting the, the house pads that we used for our design, then almost probably it's going to be the same amount of, number of house pads-
Okay. And looking at a plan that, that staff prepared that shows an overlay of the original layout and the proposed layout, it appears that the original footprint on the one lot would have pushed that house further back to the rear boundary. So if anything, bringing the house closer to the minimum front setback would actually provide a greater buffer between the existing homes and the proposed new home, is that accurate to say?
That's, yeah, that's correct. That's kind of what Rudy was alluding to. The, the two lots end up moving much closer to that cul-de-sac, so to speak. The original had the driveway cutting through the west side of that lot, putting the house back, pretty far back in that lot.
Pretty far back, right.
Yeah, pretty far back, almost behind the wetland area that we were, that was originally looked at as the wetland. But now that that's gone away, it brings everything much closer to the cul-de-sac, leaving that whole northern area a lot greater between the house and the property line.
Any concern about changes in stormwater?
No, the, honestly, the grading and utilities is all going to be pretty minimal to make that additional lot work. It's, it's very feasible to be able to do that, so to speak. Just originally, we were staying out of that wetland area until the, the determination was made.
And again, the, the number of lots in the subdivision will not change.
Correct.
The number of homes in the subdivision will not change.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have, AJ.
Speaking to the, the proposed, I guess, one lot going into two, and the houses being pulled closer to the cul-de-sac, would it be, you know, I guess I'd, I would like to consider either some sort of deed restriction or conservation easement on the, at the north and west property lines to, to maintain a buffer? Is that something that, you know, you would entertain?
Yeah, let me speak to that absolutely. Like Mr. Burton nicely said, and we appreciate that recognition, when we develop a subdivision, it's the most cost-effective to take a piece of five acres of land, completely strip it, and then start the grading. It's much simpler, much less expensive, but we've done a number of developments where we have really belabored trying to save trees. Sometimes you can't, depending if it's a road or that, but with this development, we did the preliminary clearing. We stayed about 20 feet off the property line. There was no deed restriction that mandated that, but obviously, a customer likes it, my neighbors like it. So we've already cleared everything that we need to for our drainage swales and everything that has to be in there. Everything other than that is left. We have not established a particular deed restriction, but absolutely would be amicable to do that, a 20-foot. It would be best to word that, that it's a, the customer can still use it, it's their property, but there would be no, no further clear cutting of trees after what I've already done, and we'd be happy to provide that.
Okay. We have to figure out how to word something like that that's had legs.
I think that's something that could probably get solidified with final plans, because the, obviously, this is just the sketch plan.
Right.
The full set of final plans would have to get prepared. And if, as long as Rudy's okay with it, that's something that could get at least shown on final plans and then worked out with the town during that review process, so to speak.
The town, the town might want it to be an easement, but so we'll-
Yeah, what, and then, and I think at that point, that's when the mechan, whatever mechanism the town wants to use could be figured out.
Okay.
We've got a nice batch of language, too, that, there's a lot of different ways that could go, and we've covered most of them, so I can provide that language to the board or whoever wants it, staff, and if everybody's in agreement with it, it works very well. I have no issue with that.
We have filed conservation easements in other areas of the town. We have conservation easement language on what it would entail.
Okay. All right. Can you clarify for me and I'm going to guess a lot of folks, what changed on this wetland delineation that was on the map that we approved and now is somehow not there anymore?
So the, initially, our office would have delineated the wetland, and then, like as Rudy said-
Based on what?
Um, based on the Army Corps' and guidelines for delineating the wetland.
So maps and delineation lines provided by the US Army Corps of Engineers?
Not so much mapping that exists, what our, our office going out there and delineating it in the field.
Based on a set of criteria?
Based on a set of criteria.
Okay.
What then happens is the Army Corps goes out and determines that it's non-jurisdictional and that it is not then a federally regulated wetland. So the line goes away, so to speak.
Okay. And there was no state-regulated-
Correct.
-wetland at all?
Correct.
Okay, so is it fair to say that initially, when your firm went out and did the study, you were, I guess, more conservative and created a wetland that was determined by the Army Corps of Engineers to not actually-
Correct.
-fit the criteria?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Bob?
Yeah, just one clarification. It looks like on 205 and 206, moving those pads closer to the circle, if I follow these lines, you're well within the side setbacks, so there's no variances required and still achieve those houses being closer.
Yes.
Okay.
Both of the revisions of those two meet all the 278 requirements, no variances.
Okay.
They're just a little bit further back than the other ones, but they're about 30 feet closer than they were, so we were happy about that.
Yeah, yeah, they look, you know, pretty close, and I can see it's kind of constrained just by the side setbacks. Okay.
Kelly?
No, I'm good.
Jim, any other questions?
Nope.
All right. I'd like to open it up to the audience. If anyone in the auditorium would like to speak or comment on this sketch plan, please, that's exactly what I wanted to have happen. Come on up, sir. Grab a chair, please state your name and address.
I'm Jeff Meyer, and my wife and I live at 78 Thorn Tree.
Okay.
Which abuts the north portion of this town.
Okay, so the idea of a conservation easement, I guess it's the first I've heard that that's a, even a thing. I would absolutely, 100%, had I known that from the get-go, would have insisted that that be put on this property. To Rudy's point, they've done quite a bit of clearing back there, and there's actually probably a 30-foot portion, maybe 20-foot portion of my lot line, which is completely cleared out. There's one spindly little tree back there. So I guess I would request, if that's going to be a conservation easement, can you plant something in there?
We could consider that, absolutely. You've been a great neighbor.
Okay, so you're saying that it has been cleared back to your property line?
Completely cleared.
Okay. Okay. That's it. All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this?
Yes, sir.
While you're coming up, I neglected to mention, if you are one of the millions of folks watching from around the planet this evening and you want to comment and are not physically here, you can do so by calling 585-U-S-1-585-340-8771. Or alternatively, you can visit penfield.org. There should be a link to this meeting, and you can make a comment electronically. And if you do call in, control people downstairs, we'll take the call and put you in the queue. Okay, sir, go ahead. And if you do call in, control people downstairs, we'll take the call and put you in the queue. Okay, sir, go ahead.
I'm Candelaro, 1896 Jackson Road. I would urge this board to come out and take a look at what's going on behind 1894, 1896, and 1900 Jackson Road. They've been piling dirt up there since this project started. We've been trying to contact the engineering department. The former supervisor asked us to speak with Mark Valentine, and we've gotten nowhere. It's at least 12 to 15 feet high piled dirt, and there's a trench going around from the wetland all the way around behind our property. So, our properties from Jackson Road down to the woods there, it's about a three-foot drop, because the builders, when they built our houses, found a happy medium between the road and between the woods behind us. So, water comes from the road constantly, okay? There's watershed laws, county and state laws, okay? They're being violated. Our properties will be flooded. There's no way, I'm a mason, 35 years, okay? We had to deal with these kinds of issues. There's no way we would have put a 12 to 15-foot mound of dirt, and we're told it's going to be six feet away from our property line, okay? So, six feet away, we have to look at a 12 to 15-foot mountain with houses built on top of it. So, again, I urge you all to please come out, take a look at it. We could send you photographs, but you have to stand there and look at it, okay? It is really a monstrosity. It's terrible. It's going to block half the sunlight in the wintertime. So, if you could, we can email you or something.
1896?
1896. It's between, it's behind 1894, 1896, and 1900 Jackson Road. And when Mark Valentine came to look at it, he was telling my neighbor that the top of his basement is the bottom of his house. We are not stupid. We know what the top and bottom of our houses are, because my neighbor is concerned, if the rest of us, we're going to get flooded, okay? It's already very wet back there, okay? So, Mark Valentine treats us like children, and then they're telling us they're going to pull part of the hill down, and it's going to be graded. That's a lie, okay? You don't pile dirt, and they're continuing to pile dirt, and you don't put in the drainage pipe, and then tell us they're going to remove it, okay? So, we've been given the runaround about this whole project. So, if you can, come out and look at it on a weekend, because all of us seem to work, we would really appreciate it, before you make any kind of decision, because I think you're going to be pretty shocked when you see it.
Okay, so, I'm going to potentially go out on a limb here.
Okay.
Not being a builder myself.
Right.
And again, don't, please don't throw me under the bus for what I'm about to say. So, it's possible that the dirt pile is temporary, put there as they're grading the site for the house pads and so on and so forth, and that there's an overall stormwater management plan, which I'm going to guess that is absolutely in there, that, you know, we require that no, if a builder comes in and wants to put in a development, they need to have less water leaving their site after they're done than before they got there. So, you should in no way end up with more water on your property. If anything, you should end up with less. There may be temporary drainage pipes and things placed during construction that, at the end, are moved around because of the nature of multi-phased projects. I'm not, I'm not sure if I was clear or...
No, you're very clear, but I totally disagree with you.
Okay.
Don't, we had Mark Valentine out there, and then he admitted it's going to add more dirt to it, because he wants it to match the new development. So, he's worried about his houses, those houses, not his houses. The builder's worried about those houses being flooded, okay? And the only, the only way you could prevent those houses from being flooded is to do what they're doing, okay? You don't grade a land and put in drainage pipes only to remove the dirt. It doesn't work that way. And he explained to drainage to us, there's going to be a retention or detention pond right behind our houses, so we're going to have standing water, and the trench is going to be in that six-foot area, okay, between our property lines and between that huge mound of dirt. So, I mean, it's not cost-effective, okay, to put pipes in and then lower, and the cleanouts are right there. It'd be crazy. Then you're going to lower the land, the cleanout's going to be, you know, a foot, 18 inches higher. So, there's no way they're going to level that off. They've been adding dirt since our visit with Mark Valentine. So, that's why I'm urging you to come and take a look at it.
Okay.
I think your jaws are going to drop, you know what I mean? And we do appreciate talking about buffers, but they've removed just about every friggin' tree behind 1894, 1896, and 1900 Jackson Road, all right? And if they do continue to push the dirt over six feet from our property lines, you can't add 12 feet of dirt around the base of a tree. The tree's going to die and fall. So, any remaining trees are going to be out of there, you know? But again, we appreciate you bringing up a buffer, because I remember last time we went from the planning board, or the planning board said that buffers are the homeowner's responsibility. So, that is a good thing to hear now that you're looking into buffers, so, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this sketch plan? Okay, let me just quick check and see if there's...
Did you want to come up, sir?
Any calls? Yeah, come on up.
A. Lord Leinenbach, 1891 Jackson Road, for 47 years. What new contractor is buying these lots?
I don't think there's a new contractor. It's the current developer developing the rest of the subdivision.
Okay.
Would be completing that. It's not, my understanding, anyway, is...
Somewhere along the way scuttled about was it was a new contractor, so it's the same contractor.
Yes, as far as I know, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Barry Lydic, 1894 Jackson Road. What was the rest that I was supposed to tell you? I don't hear...
No, that was, that was it.
I don't hear very well, so. What recourse will we have if we do end up with water issues after this is completed?
That is, I'm going to potentially defer that question to staff.
That'll, that'll be something at the engineering department. If you contact the engineering department, they'll come out and they can do an inspection, and I can't promise that they'll do, there's any specific recourse, but it is something that they'll take a look at and try to figure out and solve with you.
Well, except developers have to put forth a letter of credit with the town.
Correct.
So, inspections occur, and applications are made, typically by the developer's engineer, as improvements are made to the development, so that the letter of credit can be drawn down on, okay? And there's a bond, a maintenance bond in place. Those safeguards are not released by the town until the town is satisfied that what was approved by this board and what was approved by the engineering department was, in fact, what was built. So, they can't really deviate from that. They can't change the grades, they can't alter the drainage, they can't increase or decrease flow, and it's, and town law prohibits any development from depositing stormwater onto an adjacent property. So, there are safeguards in place, and there are financial and legal mechanisms in place that, that provide that system of checks and balances.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay, do you have any final comments or...
Yeah, I would like to address my neighbors, just to let them know our thinking. When we're done with this project, it will be exactly, I wouldn't say to the inch, but pretty close to the inch, exactly what the engineers have drawn, engineering department has approved. We are about where the swales are cut roughly now, and when we did remove the trees, we didn't remove any live trees in that 20 feet, we took some, whatever was dead or broken. We're about three feet below, I forgot. We're about three feet below the gentleman that talked first. So, his property is here, property line. We've got about 20 feet of whatever vegetation was left. We're three feet below that, and that's not going to be raised at all. That swale goes around all of my neighbors, and it's about four feet below some of them. So, nothing, it's impossible, water doesn't go uphill, so it will never, and I can say that here on record, there will never be water from our development on any of these neighbors' property. Their water comes to me, we transfer it through temporary swales and eventually through the lawns into the town's retention facility. As for the piles of dirt, the closer piles to my neighbors is the most beautiful topsoil that was on the site. So, there's about four piles that are closer to the neighbors currently. Once the houses are built, that topsoil will all be redistributed onto our property. As far as the high pile, there is a pretty high pile of dirt there. It's a beautiful loam sand. We have our storage facility on two lots currently now, on five and six, and they're about five feet low. So, as soon as that storage facility gets moved to a new location, this pile of dirt right now that's this high will all be taken down, placed into there, and the end result will be, it'll be exactly what the map shows, and I think everyone will be happy.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Mike. Have you been out to the site?
I have not recently, no.
Anybody from your office?
Somebody from our office would have been out there. As the construction's going on, you had mentioned that the checks are in place for letter credit, the engineering review process. One of the other ones is the SWIP inspections that happen.
Explain what SWIP means.
The SWIP is the...
Stormwater...
The Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. That gets designed, so that is basically the document that includes the overall stormwater design, the design of the subdivision, the grading, calls out how the stormwater runoff is handled for the project, but then also talks about how stormwater's going to be handled during construction and then post-construction. So, during construction, both our firm and the town receive the SWIP inspections as construction's going on, so that way, if there is any erosion control issues that come up, they get noted in the SWIP reports. That then gets submitted to the town for them to review, and if there is an issue, then typically what the town will do is notify Rudy and us to then look to resolve that issue. So, that's, in a nutshell, that's the SWIP inspections process, so to speak.
And for those that don't know, that's a, that's a process that's regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, so that's a, that's a layer of oversight higher than the town.
Correct.
And I'll just add to that for Mr. Burton. I, of course, I'm on the site. When I'm in Florida, I'm not on the site, but I'm, I'm on the site almost every day when I'm here, and I have walked it, of course, myself. I was there doing the work. We shot everything. I know it works. We did have some questions. I met Mr. Valentine out there, walked the site, explained to him what the piles were, where they were going to be, and then the last, a few months back, I met with Mike and I forgot his assistant's name, another gal, and we walked it again, just to make sure everything was good, checked all the drainage. We dug a drainage swale on the south side, a little deeper than it needed to be, but it was there to pull the water away, which helped my neighbor to the south. And the only thing we were asked to do, the neighbor to the south still felt there might be some water. It used to be wet in his area. Since we've done that, it's completely dry, but the staff asked that we put one more pipe in when we designed this, just as a safety measure, and of course, we agreed to do that. So, I have walked the site with engineers, with staff, and I'm comfortable it's, it works, and it's, short of the ugly dirt piles that are now grassed, it will be beautiful when it's done.
Okay. Yes, sir, come on up.
Next, Remley, who lives at 43 DuMay Lane, which is also known as Lot 13, Stafford Park. We're the last house in Phase 1, the very last. So, I can't comment on what's going on way down at the new end of Phase 2, but I can attest that the water system for drainage, runoff, snow melt, seems to be working. I haven't seen any puddles, piles of water, you know, accumulating anywhere. The drainage line from all of Stafford Park kind of goes under my edge of my property, and it shoots out into the big retention ponds and detention ponds out behind me, and seems to work. The water doesn't accumulate in the street. It does accumulate out there behind my house in the big open area. You get a big couple of days of rain, you'll get a foot or so of water out there. Couple days later, it's gone. So, all I can say is what they've done so far seems to be working, at least from where I sit.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, yes, sir, come on up.
I just want to, again, urge you to come and take a look at it, because this gentleman is misleading you. It's, there's, the 12 feet of dirt that's on there is not going down. It's impossible, okay? So, again, I want to urge you to come and take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no other comments, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will call this hearing closed.
Ladies and gentlemen.
We have any new business?
We don't have any new business. Did you guys want to discuss the sketch at all?
Thanks, Carol.
Let's start a draft...
Good to see you, too.
Draft sketch letter?
Sketch letter.
You know, I ran into Josie. She was working at the polling place.
Everybody can get, gather their thoughts and...
I haven't either, but she was working at the polling place.
Is there anything we want to put down right now?
Church.
Excuse me, folks?
On Election Day.
Yep. Excuse me, folks, just trying to finish up in a jern here, so if, thanks.
Is there anything you want to put down specifically right now? So, I want to provide, one thing, I want to provide a couple pieces of context. From our understanding, the way, so the way they described the wetland as sort of not existing, from our understanding, is there are wetland-like conditions that exist on the site, but because they are isolated, they're not connected to any waters of the United States, they don't receive drainage or are connected to any other waterways, they're just, it's a low area that collects and holds water. We know that the soil here is not conducive for drainage. It tends to hold water and can create wetland-like conditions. They received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers essentially saying it's non-jurisdictional, doesn't require any permits, you can do what you want, it's not regulated as a federal wetland, so it does...
And we have that? We got a copy of that?
Yes, we do have a copy of that, and I can, I believe it is in the drop. They, they provide their rationale, so it's considered a non-adjacent wetland. You know, it's not delineation indicated no drainage or tributary. You know, it's not delineation indicated no drainage or tributaries within the vicinity. It's a shallow surface, concave depression that collects water and holds it long enough to provide wetland characteristics, but does not drain to any protected or navigable waters, which is one of the classification requirements through the Army Corps. So they essentially say, as far as we're concerned, it is not a wetland that is protectable under federal statutes. I can't speak to any of the engineering concerns of the one neighbor. I'm not an engineer, and I don't do the SWIP and site inspections for the town. It would be something we can ask Mike O'Connor. In all likelihood, it is likely that those piles are temporary topsoil stockpiles based on the maps that are approved currently for, for Phase 2. There is supposed to be a localized swale there that will drain behind 1894 and 1896 between lots nine and 10 right now. There will be a pipe with an end section that will collect water from those properties that she flows towards 1918 and directs it to the pond through the stormwater conveyance system that Rudy will be installing as part of Phase 2.
Right.
So to that, to that end, certainly don't want to add to the, to the, to the work of the town, but, you know, I think it would be wonderful if, you know, perhaps Mike could just draft a memo and share it with those three or four residents, and maybe, maybe send them a copy of one of the SWIP inspection reports, so that they understand that that's being done on a weekly basis during construction.
Yep.
And, and then give them a description of the temporary stockpiling of topsoil and how that's very common, and it's used, it'll be redistributed as the houses are built and the lawns are established and, you know, and some things that might, you know, I, it seemed like a couple of these folks were a little upset, thinking, thinking as though the, the town didn't care, or that the, you know, the town perhaps wasn't, you know, holding the, the developer to the...
And was approved or...
The approved plan, so, yeah, I, I think it would be great. I mean, certainly, you know, we, we try to drive by every parcel where there's an application before us, so that we have a little bit of an understanding when we're rendering incision, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not feasible for, you know, this board to go out and, and look at a site under construction, you know, without survey markers in place and elevation markers, and understanding, you know, where the temporary stockpiles of spoil from a basement or topsoil or what have you is. I mean, that's just not feasible, and I wouldn't want, you know, this gentleman to think that we're just ignoring his request to have somebody come out and, and walk the site. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a normal request, I think. So, so at this point...
I'd like to get a sketch letter started.
Yep.
And...
Are there any specific items you'd like added to it now? I know we can have future discussion on that at the next word session.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, what type of language, what type of agreement in terms of a buffer behind, you know, the north and west portion, whether it makes the most sense, whether it's a conservation easement or a deed restriction or something.
And if you guys would like, I can send you guys...
What actually gets the job done in being the least onerous on the town?
And I can send you previous conservation easements that we've done, so you have the language of, of what goes into it and the restrictions that are typically placed upon it.
And is it really, like, geared towards buffering?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so essentially, they're usually, the restrictions are, you can't remove any of the natural vegetation, except for dead-dying diseased trees, or if it's like a noxious weed, if you've got poison ivy or something growing in, in there, you can remove that, but otherwise you can't remove any, you can't clear it to be lawn space and things like that.
Right, right. Yeah, and I guess in a preliminary, final, you know, written compelling argument for the justification. So with that, do you want to move that we start drafting the letter and...
So moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Snauer?
Snauer, aye.
And if we have nothing else, we will adjourn.
That's all I have for tonight.
All set? Great. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a great evening, and we'll be back in two weeks.